What is that going to do for today?
Well, I'm just seeing Council.
Oh, it's senators.
Test, test.
Hello? Oh, yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna, I'm gonna, I get to click this. Hopefully hit the right amount of pressure on that. Welcome to the rate-based utility budget meeting. So we have Mayor Clark online. Mayor Clark, you can hear us. I believe they did a sound check. It's the first time I'm chairing where we have to navigate online or not. Mayor Clark, can you hear me? I guess I'm verifying.
Yes, Counsel Dumanowski, I can hear you.
And we also have Counsel Sharp. Can you hear us? Okay?
Yes.
And Mr. Tucher is online as well, but I'm assuming he's internal so we can hear him. So, okay, we're gonna get started. Sorry for the two-minute delay here, but we're ready to go. So I will kick it off to our City Manager, Mitchell, for opening directions. Here we go.
Thank you and through the chair. We are excited to be here, and this is part of our budget process on rate-based utilities. First, some opening comments. I'll turn it over to Dennis, Managing Director Egert. I really like the way that we've developed this budget because it gives us time to focus on the various areas in one meeting. Go ahead, Dennis.
Managing Director Egert.
Good afternoon, Council. A few words of introduction before we introduce the speakers. So the development of the city's 2526 budget continues with four council committee, the whole meetings in October and November. And those will be to present the details of four areas: rate-based utilities, energy production, municipal, and land development and real estate. These meetings will allow council to dig deep into the details of certain topics and ask questions of staff to gain full understanding before an item is formally deliberated and decided at a regular city council meeting in December. These reports are provided for information only, and no decisions are made at these committee of the whole meetings. The rate-based utility budget deliberations is the first of these four deliberation sessions. At this point, departments have completed their base operating budgets as well as identified operational cost pressures, operational initiatives, and sustaining and growth capital opportunities. The purpose of this afternoon/evening is to seek alignment with council on utility rates that will be charged to ratepayers. Council also has the opportunity to ensure that the city's budget plans align with their strategic priorities. In developing this budget, administration has identified significant challenges with inflation, aging infrastructure, declining revenues from other levels of government, as well as the changing energy landscape and the funds that would be required to adjust to these shifts. Carefully outlining these implications to city council and the entire community is an important step towards sound budget decisions. Preparing the city budget is one of the most important tasks, both for city council and for administration. The process is lengthy, occurring over the course of several months with a multitude of inputs and considerations, including what property tax and utility rate revenues are required to operate the city, and what other sources of revenue are expected, what levels of services should we be providing, and what capital projects should occur, and much, much more. Our objective for this budget is financial sustainability, to balance the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. Through this process, we are committed to aligning with council's strategic priorities, addressing community needs, balancing affordability with the need to invest in infrastructure, ensuring financial sustainability, and also using our reserves thoughtfully. Ultimately, the budget serves as the foundation for meeting the public service needs of Medicine Hat residents, making decisions on municipal infrastructure and planning for long-term sustainability. With that introduction, I will hand it over to Erin. And Erin will lead us through the presentation here and introducing other speakers as we go through the presentation. Erin.
Thank you, Managing Director Egert. Good afternoon, Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you today to discuss the rate-based utilities. Before we begin, I do want to acknowledge those who have come today to speak and to support this conversation. Over on my left-hand side here, starting on the left to the right, Jared Dickey with the Corporate Planning and Performance, manager of Corporate Planning and Performance; Jasmine Gross, Business Analyst with our Energy Marketing and Business Analysis Team; then we have Grayson Moch, who is the Director of our Utility Distribution Systems; Gareth Chudley, who is a Corporate Analyst with Corporate Planning and Performance; and then Jamie Garland, who is our Director of Environmental Utilities. So, and on the line with us, we also have Travis Tucher, who is the Manager of Energy Marketing and Business Analysis. So to begin today, before we jump into the rate-based utilities, I do want to begin with a little bit of an introduction to the series that we're going through. And then after we go through that introduction, I do want to talk a little bit about the council motion that was put forth on July 15th, because that's the last place that we left off when we discussed budget items in regular council. And then after that, I will turn the floor over to Jared Dickey to walk us through the rate-based utilities, including our water, sewer, solid waste, electric, and gas distribution. So last year, when we talked to councilors after the budget process, we heard three things, three main asks for the new budget cycle. And that included having more direct ties between our budget and your strategic plan, which we delivered through our New Growth Opportunities series that we held in June and July; more justification for budget requests, which was accomplished through the development of individual business cases for every new ask; and more time to deliberate. In the 2324 budget cycle, we hosted five meetings, including about seven hours' worth of total budget discussion time. Many of these meetings were tagged on the end of regular council meetings, which meant by the time they came up, there was already a lot of weighty items that had already been discussed. And some of these meetings were cut short by rolling late into the evenings. Performing a survey from other cities, we also discovered that other jurisdictions were spending much more time in deliberations than we were, in some cases, a few full days or even over a week. So administration proposed an increase in 2526 that would help to increase transparency, understanding of our budget, but also provide, as council requested, more time to deliberate. So we've held three of those meetings in our budget pathway to date. You can see them up on the screen. The first one was the April Budget Planning Meeting, where we took a preliminary look at our budget plan. We looked at our current external environment commitments to residents, our goals for this budget, our fiscal targets that anchor us to our long-term picture, including our cash, our debt, and our budget gap, and our key assumptions for this budget. Then we held two additional meetings that we called the New Growth Opportunities. This is where council was provided with a business case for every new growth opportunity that we were suggesting within the city. For residents, this was an opportunity for them to hear about all of the new things that we were proposing to do in this budget cycle within the city. And we had the wealth of the city's expertise available to you. All of our managing directors and directors were here to answer any questions that you had about any of the new growth opportunities that were presented. And after those meetings, we did have one regular council meeting, which isn't on the screen, but council had provided a motion during that meeting, which we'll be responding to here shortly. On top of the four council meetings that have already been conducted, over the next two months, we will be hosting a series of seven other meetings related to budget, which is a total of 11 meetings, approximately about 22 hours' worth of total airtime on this budget. And when we benchmark other cities, that's putting us right in line with where we would expect to be as far as time deliberating budget, especially a budget as complex as this city's budget. And the goal of these meetings, though, is not just to put airtime into it, but the content of the meetings must also be valuable. And the purpose of these budgets, of course, is to provide confidence to this council that we have provided a plan that not only will sustain the city's operations, but will help to bring and enact your council's strategic priorities into the coming years. With this series, a series of four meetings that is starting today with rate-based utilities, we want to explore the city's proposed budget in depth. The goal of this series and these meetings is first to understand the business, understand the strategy behind the business, and then deliberate the budget. It's important to understand that each budget tells a story. To be comfortable with the budget, a person ought not to just look at the numbers, but they need to understand what they mean and what the story is that they're telling. For a story to make sense, it needs context. So that's our three-pronged approach here on the screen. Understand the business. We will take time within each one of these sessions to provide an education on the business unit itself and how it operates, understanding the strategy, understanding the context in which the budget exists, understanding what the business unit is attempting to accomplish, what it is responding to in its current environment, and how it is trying to position itself for the future; and finally, understanding the budget itself. We have broken the series down into four sections, including rate-based utilities, which is today, energy production, municipal, and land development and real estate. These are the four main business units in the city, and each of them has a unique story. It has unique operational challenges and opportunities. Each one has its own unique questions that we will be discussing with you. For our rate-based unit, the main questions that's on everyone's mind will be, what are the utility rates that we are proposing and why? With energy production, the questions really surround the sensitivities, risks, and uncertainties that are impacting future potential growth and cash needs within this business unit. In the municipal group, the question will be around the proposed tax rates and the value that it provides for our citizens. And then within the land development and real estate group, the questions will really be about what is happening strategically within this group. What are we seeing on the horizon for land development? And fundamentally, how do we define value of a land transaction? By the end of this series, our hope is that administration, that as an administration, is that we will also have heard from you. Our goal is to align our budget asks and recommendations coming into December with the will of council as much as possible, so that we are able to provide that confidence to you that the budget will meet your strategic priorities while also meeting the operational needs of the city. Jumping then into our July 15th regular council motion. The motion that was posed by this council states, "Council directs administration to reevaluate all new growth opportunities and the associated tax implications, reassessing and providing scenarios at different tax rates below the rate of 5.6." Since we met with you in our initial key budget assumptions in April, there have been a few developments, however, that we need to, that have caused us to rethink our financial outlook that we need to address here. The primary one being a significant decline in earnings within our electric generation business unit. The primary driver being a decline in the AESO pool price compared to what we had initially forecasted. As prices rise, so do our prospects to earn additional revenue. But as prices decline, the opposite is true. This lower price trend extends beyond '25 and '26 and impacts our entire forecast, bringing prices lower by about 13% on average over the forecast horizon compared to what we had initially anticipated. The main message here is that our electric generation AES pool price is on a declining trend into our budget years '25 and '26. How does this impact the municipality? Lower prices translate to lower electric generation earnings. Lower earnings means less funds going into the reserves as a dividend. Due to the changes that we're experiencing in energy production, we are projecting that we will see reduced contributions through 2031 within our forecast horizon. This is a significant, this is significant for the municipality and for a few reasons, some of which may not generally be evident either to residents or council. But there are many, there are a few different ways here that the municipality is impacted by a lower dividend from our electric generation unit. The first one being lower investment income. So if we are projecting to earn less money, that's less money in our reserves that we have to invest into, to put into investments. And investment earnings are used to offset the need for property tax increases. So in 2013, or sorry, in 2023, 12% of the municipal business unit's external revenues came from investment revenue. That's a significant component of our total revenues as a municipality compared to just 2% back in 2019. It's an increase of about $14 million between the two dates. So this has become a significant component of our overall revenues as a city. This increase can be largely attributed to electric generation business earnings during that time. However, as we have stated, we don't anticipate this to continue at the same rate that it has in past years. Second, the lower contributions means there's less likelihood of us being able to provide a dividend directly to the municipality. One of the, one of the ways that we had proposed to balance the budget by 2026 was to provide a $3 million business unit dividend directly from earnings from our business units to the municipality each year. With the reduction to contributions, this makes it less likely that we will be able to sustain a $3 million in-year dividend from, into the future years. And there's certainly a couple of years on the forecast horizon that we're seeing where that $3 million might be called into question. The next one here is less funds to buy capital. One of the things that may not always be known, and especially when we're focusing on municipal budget gap, because capital is not a part of the municipal budget gap, is that unlike other cities who collect tax to pay for their capital projects, the City of Medicine Hat collects very little property tax to pay for capital. We primarily use our reserves to fund those things. So we're anticipating that in the, on the forecast horizon, the city could need upwards of $28 million on average per year to sustain its capital needs. And with that, we're seeing a much lower forecast for free cash flow dividends coming in from our business unit. So this puts a bit of concern on that picture as well. The overall message there would be that we are anticipating over this horizon that we'll be drawing more from our reserves than we'll be putting in, resulting in an overall loss to cash or a draw on cash year over year within the organization. And finally, there will be less funds available to fund future budget gaps. So the more that, the less money coming in for dividends, the less funds that are available to help cover the operating gaps on the, on the municipal side. So where does this, where does this leave us? Well, in our initial budget address, we did acknowledge that the city was facing some, a number of headwinds, including inflationary pressures, reduced grant funding and fine revenue from the province, as well as foregone revenue during the pandemic due to zero tax increases during 2020 and 2021, as well as only a 2.5% increase in 2022 as opposed to the planned 4%. On top of this now, we are also dealing with, so those, those items there, those known pressures were a part of the plan that we had brought to you in April. But we are now experiencing new pressures as well. Reduced electric generation revenues are resulting in investment income lowering within the reserves, and that's gone down significantly. As a result, the municipal budget gap has increased. So what are, what is administration doing to combat this, this reduction in revenue? Well, within our original budget that we had provided, there were a number of efforts that we had already taken to keep costs low and be able to manage that, that budget gap. So some of the things that we had already proposed back in April included a $2 million service level reduction in 2026. That service level reduction would be determined after the service level inventories were completed, and we would bring back recommendations to this council in 2025. Another initiative was a $5 million Medicine Hat endowment funding. That's already been included in our budget. $3 million business unit dividend from in-year earnings. And then keeping budget levels at the 2024 levels for '25 and '26, effectively causing our departments to have to absorb inflation. It's anticipated that this had an impact of about $1.9 million on our municipal budget. And finally, absorbing inflation on capital projects as well. We tried to keep our capital budgets in line with the spending over the last seven years. That's where we started our sustaining capital budget funding levels. And with that, we know that capital has been especially hit hard by inflation. Back in April, we showed a picture that showed some of the items is steel pipes, water mains, cement. These things have gone up since 2019 by well over 80%, sometimes 100%. So I'd encourage if you're looking for those examples to refer back to the, to the April presentation that we did.
Erin, I'm gonna interrupt. We do have a question from Counsel Knodel.
Thank you, Counsel Dumanowski, through the chair. So my question is, probably doesn't have an answer, but my brain can't help but inquire. So you, I have two, two things. We have the $2 million service level reduction in 2026. It says details yet to be determined. So can you just walk me through the process of guaranteeing that $2 million service level reduction? Is that you've got your, your, your managers, you've, you've given directive that we need cuts at this, this particular amount? Like, how does that come to be when we don't have the details in front of us? How do we know for sure that's where we're at? And then my other question is, is there any flags that have been placed on nonessential services that we offer? services that we offer? And I, I, I know we're going through the process of service level evaluation and getting to the point where we, we understand what we offer, but is there anything that's come out of the woodwork that we're going, yeah, we don't necessarily need to be doing that? And there, and I, yeah, I guess I'm answering the question in my head before you answer, but I'm going to let you answer the question.
So thank you for the question, Councilor Knodel. So the two, two million dollar service level reduction is part of work that we're currently doing to develop a service level inventory. That's a work, it's a very detailed work, looking at all of the services that we provide to the city across all of our various areas, all of our different departments. And that work is currently underway. So we're anticipating that some of that information should be complete by the end of this year, and then we would go into a process of trying to cost some of those things and do some further analysis. So at this point, very preliminary, we don't have anything earmarked at this point, but the intention would be that out of the work that we're doing, that we would identify areas where there are service levels where perhaps we are exceeding what might be a benchmark compared to other municipalities where we could likely look for a reduction without having a max, like a maximum impact to our residents. So that, that's what we, we would be looking for, but at this point, we don't have any details on that.
Quick follow-up, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
So is it a directive at this point that, that your departments are tasked with, with looking at, okay, what, what are we doing? Like, are they doing, and I know, again, like, I know we've talked about this and I know that there, that is the case, but I'm just wondering what it looks like in real life? And maybe this is too in the weeds, but it, are they at the point where, like, you're saying we are doing this? Is this high-level work that's being done? Is this being driven down into the teams? At what, what stage are you at?
Might see if, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, through the chair. It's part of, to Councilor Knodel, it's part of the overall strategy and it's something that it is very high level at this stage, but we need to inventory the service levels and then apply costs because we should have had service level inventory and we, and we don't. So one of the things is how can we ask council for certain types of services if we don't know exactly which services we're providing? I know I'm not answering your question, but highlight, it's at high level right now and it's going to be a strategic rollout that works together in tandem with the workforce strategy. How are we providing those services and what does that mean?
So you're, you're done with your question, Councilor Knodel? You feel, I feel like you have a follow-up, no? So maybe while you contemplate, I, I wasn't going to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it because I, I recall one of the other meetings we talked about leading up to the conversation around projected budget percentage request coming up. And you made a point then and you did again today regarding the city acts differently unlike other municipalities putting monies away. Now you, I think you referenced capital. Are you talking about capital expenditures on the utility side, the municipal side or both?
Typically, a municipality would collect through its tax rate a certain percentage to put towards sustaining capital within the organ, within the municipality. So the rates would collect rates to pay for utility-related sustaining capital and then the other cities that aren't as blessed as we are with the reserves that we have would have to find that funding elsewhere and it would typically come through your taxes and grants.
So just on that note then, a little bit convoluted, but I'll try and make sense. So if we are act unlike other municipalities, yet we have the advantages or we've had advantages through our utility side to do, to, to respond to those capital demands or requests as needed or when needed. And yet we compare, when we compare our projected rates against other municipalities who act differently, are we really getting an apples-to-apples comparison? In other words, are we shorting ourself by drawing comparisons that really don't act the same behind the scenes or, and I'm not saying to, to a significant extent, but to some extent? And/or is our request disproportionately higher because we don't have those kinds of reserves accumulating behind the scenes and we have the need to respond only when needed and or called upon? Does that make sense to you? So in other words, we're looking at five point six, I believe it is. We, we drew our comparison to other municipalities. In many cases, we're well below what others are doing and some, to the average citizenry that they're not necessarily concerned about if we're below other municipalities, they just want to see the overall rate impact. But if we are, if we're not able to act or we don't act the same from the standpoint of putting those funds away, are we, is it truly an apples-to-apples comparison? I guess that's my question.
That's a, that's an excellent question and certainly it's, it's very difficult to find a municipality that compares to Medicine Hat. We have a lot of advantages that other municipalities don't and because of that, we've been able to keep property taxes relatively low compared to other municipalities. Costs of living and everything remains low compared to other municipalities. It's difficult to find a comparator in the market. We do have excellent services here, right from the utilities that we'll look at today to municipality, to the municipality and, and the services that it provides. It's difficult to have an apples-to-apples comparison of that. So it's, it's tricky to find, even as you mentioned, we're looking at the five point six. How do we compare that to say thirteen percent increase in Edmonton or a nine percent increase in, in Red Deer? It's difficult to find someone who acts and behaves the way that we do, but we're trying for the best we can to, to find cities of roughly the same size to, to provide a comparison to.
Yeah, and, and just to qualify, thank you. It's, it's not a criticism. So if we, to the point you made, twelve percent or thirteen percent, if there, if that percentage reflects some capital or some accumulation of funds toward capital projects and our five point six does not, again, to my earlier point, are we perhaps, we could be seen to be overcharging because we have, if we're making, drawing comparisons to others who are close to us or mid-sized cities like us, we're, we're in the same boat, but we have no, we're not accumulating those same funds. We are on our utility side because it acts differently, but we're not, we're not building that through our rate side and our utility side to, to respond in kind with, with, with the same that other communities would have to do. I guess my point is, you're right, it's difficult to find a comparator, but those kinds of observations are hard to not see when you're, when you're looking at the deeper dive when it comes to this stuff. So anyway, I, I, I get your point. I think I'm satisfied with that for now and I'm trying to be mindful that we have Mary Clark and Councilor Sharps as well. And so I'll, I'll echo what others have said when they chaired. If you have a question and we don't, put your hand up. I do have Teams out on my desktop here, but if we're not getting to you after a period of time, just holler out and we'll get to you. Any other questions? I don't see any, we'll continue.
Yeah, thank you for the question. These are the things that we battle with internally all the time is how to compare, you know, are we doing well or not compared to other cities? We know that even a cost of living comparison between say an Edmonton and a Medicine Hat, it's a different population, different amenities, air dries, bedroom community, like there's all of these different things that come into play. It's hard, it's hard to do that, but what we're trying to do is trying to provide some kind of comfort level that we are within the realm of reasonable compared to other communities that are, are looking at the same levels of increases. So on top of this, how have we responded? Well, in order to respond to administration or to council's regular council motion, as well as looking at trying to mitigate some of the impact of the reduced earnings on investment income, our senior leadership has spent some significant time with directors looking at different ways to absorb, mitigate and to defer budget. We had two meetings as an executive leadership in the beginning of September and spent a number of hours looking at different ways that we could find cost reduction measures. We also looked at various vacant positions within the city, seeing if there was ways that we could perhaps reduce some of those positions in order to offset some of the new asks that, that we were looking for with, within this budget, within the new growth opportunities. And as a result of those efforts, sorry, my mouse isn't clicking here. Suspense, okay. As a result of those efforts, this was what we were able to achieve as a city, as an administration. We reduced our growth capital ask from the ask we provided you back in June and July by eight million dollars. We found ways to reduce our sustaining capital asks by four point eight million dollars. This had a result of reducing our overall pull on the capital reserve by eleven point seven million dollars. We reduced our new operating initiatives within the municipality by two hundred thousand. We reduced our base operating expenses by another two point six million and we found six hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue. Of the original ask of ten FTEs that we had presented to you, we have found mitigation for all of those positions and we have also made a number of other budgetary adjustments in our assumptions. Where has this all landed us? Well, we started with a five point six percent tax rate for 2025 and 2026 tax revenue increase. As a result of the adjustments that we made, as well as the lowered dividends, we see a six point six percent increase to that five point six, bringing us up to about a twelve point two percent. The efforts of administration to find mitigation efforts reduced that down to eight point two. And we are suggesting that we would look at extending our budget gap close from 2026 to 2028. And if we were to do that, it would bring an additional two point six percent reduction to our required tax increase for twenty-five and twenty-six. So that would bring us back down to about the five point six percent tax rate where we began. We do believe that extending the gap from twenty-six to twenty-eight is warranted for a number of reasons, including right now, our city's financial reserves are in a good position, they're showing strength, which will allow us a few more years to work through the budget gap, to, to close that gap. And that also aligns with our efforts to create steady predictable tax increases for our residents, keeping it at the five point six as opposed to seeing that rise up to eight point two. The present pressure, pressure that we're seeing from electric generation earnings highlights the sensitivity that the city has towards its business unit earnings. And one of the goals that we had mentioned back in April was that there's a desire within our longer-term plan to reduce the reliance on volatile business unit earnings within the city. We believe that the city's vulnerability to shifts in price is, is a high risk for the city and we would look to reduce this, but not in the near term. This would be something we would look to do over the long term, again, to reduce that, that burden on the taxpayer and looking for ways to create that steady predictable tax increase. This places emphasis then on the work ahead of us. For 2025, there's work ahead of us to slow expenditure growth, to find ways to mitigate cost within the city and to work with the service level inventory that we develop in order to find ways to reduce cost where necessary. This is a slide that we've provided a number of times to this council. You've seen this before. This is how our city's average tax rate increase compares to other cities. And the, the numbers that we're showing on the screen here, there's a couple of things I just want to highlight. First off, in 2024, we're seeing an increase for the City of Madison Hat of around four point three, whereas other jurisdictions are averaging about seven point one. Many cities coming out of the pandemic, during the pandemic, did a property tax freeze just like we did in order to help reduce the cost to residents who were struggling during the pandemic. Many of the, those municipalities have responded with tax increases in 2024 and earlier to help mitigate some of the losses that they experienced during that time. The City of Medicine Hat has not done that, whereas other municipalities have. So when we're looking at twenty-five and twenty-six, some of that cost in, or the foregone revenue has been mitigated already within these other municipalities, whereas for, for Medicine Hat, it has not.
Aaron, I'm going to just interrupt. I'm trying to find the right segues to interrupt you, but Councilor McGrogan asked a question. Yeah, thank you. So this chart, I just, looking at this, I think of two cities that are similar in size and kind of geographic isolation, that being Fort Mac and Grand Prairie. And I'm wondering if there's a comparator that we could see on how they are, I guess, compared to us, being, in my view, they're very similar.
We could certainly look to provide that information for our municipal meeting. I do have some information, but I'm not sure if it's public yet or not.
I don't see any other speakers, continue.
The other thing I, I do want to mention here as well, some of these projections are likely low. We are seeing from, for example, Edmonton, they've recently posted in the news that if no further mitigation efforts are taken by the city, they would likely require a tax increase upwards of thirteen percent. So there is some upward pressure on the numbers that they've forecasted, as well as the City of Calgary was mandated by their council to find a way to keep the tax rate increases in twenty-five and twenty-six to three point six and three point one. As you can see, the numbers on the screen are already one percent higher. And so it appears that there's some upward pressure on the numbers for, for Edmonton as well. Other cities like the City of Lethbridge combated some of that reduction in revenue that they experienced during COVID by instituting a four-year, five point one percent tax increase, which is similar to what we're recommending to, to look at here to close the gap between twenty-five and twenty-eight. So that's just a little bit of context then to what you're seeing on the screen. So if we were to look at, getting to council's motion then, looking at further reductions to the property tax rates that we are proposing for twenty-five and twenty-six, the numbers up here on the screen indicate the change in property tax revenue by reducing that property tax from five point six down to either four point five or three point five between twenty-five and twenty-eight. Reduction of, down to a four point five percent tax rate between 2025 and 2028 would result in a loss of revenues of about four point six million dollars by the end of 2028 on an annual basis. This would be equivalent to, and this is only for illustration purposes, this isn't an actual recommendation, but this is just to show the magnitude of what four point five million dollars means to the City of Medicine Hat. This would be equivalent to the operating costs of Echo Dale, the Big Marble Goal Center and the pools and rinks within the city, all the pools and rinks within the city, which should come to about four point three million dollars. If we were to look at a reduction down to a three point five percent tax rate between twenty-five and twenty-eight, this would reduce annual property tax revenues by eight point six million dollars by 2028. So in order to close the gap, we would need to find eight point six million dollars of additional cost. And again, that would be, that would be similar to the cost of all of the above, Echo Dale, Big Marble Goal, pools and rinks, and our transit service as well. Other equivalencies would be eight point six million is approximately the cost of our parks department or fifty percent of our firefighter and emergency staff or thirty-five percent of our police force. Again, these are just illustrations, they're not recommendations, but it, it's meant to illustrate the magnitude of some of these additional cuts and the unlikelihood that we would find such cuts without making reductions to services for the city. So what would be the implications for monthly tax bills? So we're looking at the median household, which is a property value of about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. A five point six percent tax increase would amount to about a twenty dollar and fifty cent lift to the monthly tax bill for a home, a single-family dwelling of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars by the end of 2026. So by the end of 2026, they would be paying twenty dollars more a month. If you were to look at a four point five percent tax increase, that would reduce down to sixteen dollars and thirty-nine cents or a difference here of about four dollars and eleven cents per month and a reduction down to three and a half. and a reduction down to three and a half percent by the end of twenty twenty six would be a reduction of about seven dollars and eighty two cents per month. So the key points I want to leave you with today, and we will come back to this for our municipal meeting on November fifteenth, or sorry, November fifth. But we want to highlight that the municipality should be self sustaining and not dependent on volatile energy revenue. If there's anything that what we've learned over the last couple of months, it's that we are sensitive to fluctuations within our energy market. And we should be working towards efforts to live within our means and to find ways to reduce our reliance on this volatile energy revenue. We are proposing a five point six percent property tax increase. And this is necessary in order to sustain, to ensure that the municipality is self sustaining. We're seeing continued pressures from reduced property tax increases during the pandemic, lower grant and fine revenue, as well as inflationary increases. The challenges to electric generation commodity prices have increased that request for property tax requirements. If it wasn't for some of those increases, sorry, reductions to electric generation commodity prices, we would be in a position to have lower taxes below the five point six percent as requested by council. The current budget already contains cost reduction measures, as we highlighted already. But we were able to find an additional twelve point eight in capital and two point eight in operating expenses. And additional cost reductions are not recommended at this time, but rather would be a part of the ongoing work into twenty twenty five. So with that, that's the end of my component of the presentation. I'll just see if there's any questions, and if not, I will pass it on to Jared Dickey.
I don't see any questions, so proceed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Aaron. Good afternoon, council and members of the public. I'm here today to present and answer questions about the rate based utilities budget for twenty five and twenty twenty six. As you can see, I've got a great crew behind me here that'll answer any of the more tough or difficult questions or technical questions. I'm going to share this presentation with Jasmine Gross, who will walk through the electric distribution and gas distribution details. The team here today, along with the finance team that just presented, has built this budget with a focus on affordability that ensures services remain accessible to the community while balancing the financial sustainability to maintain the long term viability of each of these utilities. Utility rates impact household budgets as well as businesses. In twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budgets, the associated utility rates continue to focus on fairness, sustainability, infrastructure needs that support the community today as well as into the future. Today's presentation will walk through the rate based utilities, which is a piece of the overall organizational pie. Provide some information on how utility rates are calculated, highlight the operating and capital budget requests, show the customer impact of the proposed utility rates, as well as walk through some of the risks and challenges that the utility industry is facing. As Aaron mentioned earlier, there are four pieces to the pie that make up the city's budget. Land development and real estate, energy production, municipal, and rate based utilities. Today's presentation will focus on the rate based utilities, which are made up of five distinct utilities. Electric distribution, gas distribution, also known as utility distribution systems, water, sewer, solid waste, also known as environmental utilities. This pie chart represents at a very high level an overview from twenty twenty three. The rate based utilities represent approximately sixteen percent of the city's expenses, seventeen percent of the city's revenues, and sixty four percent of the city's outstanding debenture. This reflects the very intensive asset nature that this group is involved within the city's portfolio. Sustaining and growth capital investment made by the utilities is critical for maintaining reliable services to the community. By continually investing in infrastructure, technology, and workforce development, the city will reduce downtime and enhance performance, leading to more efficient operations and improved service delivery. Being able to adapt to new technologies and changing market demands, as well as improve safety and compliance by keeping our facilities and equipment up to date, meeting safety standards and regulatory requirements, protecting both employees and customers. At the end of the day, each utility's goal is to provide safe and reliable services to our customers. Why are rates regulated and what does being regulated mean? So this part of the presentation, I'm going to walk through the theory and some of the methodology behind rate making. And at any point in time, please interrupt or ask questions because this is something we live and breathe on a daily basis. And so if I say something that you don't understand, if I can't answer it, definitely one of the the people supporting me in this presentation will be able to. So utility rates are regulated because they're a natural monopoly. It doesn't make sense for two water lines to service a customer, two power lines to service a customer. Therefore, there are rules and regulations in place to protect customers from excessive prices. In Alberta, the AUC or Alberta Utilities Commission regulates the gas and electric distribution rates within the province. In Medicine Hat, we follow AUC rate making principles. However, in our case, the city council, you are our representative to approve those rates. Five key principles that we are objectives that we look at when we're determining utility rates are revenue requirement, equity, economic efficiency, ease of understanding, and administration administrative effort. When we talk about revenue requirement, we want to ensure that revenue is stable, sustainable, and that each utility is financially sustainable on its own. On the equity side, we look at cost causation. So each customer class should pay their fair share of the cost to provide the service. Economic efficiency looks at our assets being utilized effectively, ensuring that the utilities investing in assets that benefit the community, the utility, and the utility customers that we serve. Ease of understanding, so customers need to understand what they're paying for. This is an area we receive a lot of questions about. We need to keep in mind the city's utility bill represents more than one utility. And in most cases, we're representing five utilities on two pages. An administrative effort, so we have to make sure that our billing system is capable and able to make changes and effort to make sure that our billing process isn't too complicated. So we work closely with our billing team and customer service team to make sure utility rates are easy for them to administer while still providing customers with enough detail. This illustration provides a high level overview of all the inputs and what it takes and all the components required to make sure that the financial sustainability of each of the utilities. So first, we look at the inputs. So the operating and capital budgets that we're we're providing with you with today are used to create short and midterm operational and capital plans. Next, we determine the revenue requirement. So this represents the fair and reasonable amount of revenue that should be recovered from customers. We then allocate those costs. This is the process of allocating the revenue requirement among different customer classes within each utility. After the allocation is complete, we apply rate making principles, as well as terms and conditions are used to define the methods used to recover from the various rate classes. Calculating utility rates is the process of determining a set of rates that each rate class will generate the necessary revenue to recover the cost associated with that particular customer. The amount of revenue generated is then compared to the revenue requirement to determine whether the utility is on track to meet its long term financial and capital goals, thus establishing the feedback loop. If utility rates are effective, the revenue generated should assist the utility in reaching its long term financial plan. However, inefficient and ineffective utility rates lead to improper utilization of infrastructure, resulting in a cash flow that is unable to maintain the financial sustainability of the utility. The following slide provides details of the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six calculation of the weighted average cost of capital. So this represents the regulated portion of the revenue requirement calculation. The AUC deemed debt to equity ratio is sixty three percent debt and thirty seven percent equity. Although each of our utilities' financial structure indifferent is is slightly different, this calculation the AUC has provided for all distribution utilities in Alberta. We then apply the rolling fifteen year average debt rate. The city of Medicine Hat borrows money through Alberta Capital Finance Authority, ACFA. And the equity rate, the equity rate approved by AUC for twenty five and twenty six is nine point two eight percent. You put all that together, and that's how you get the the formula below. So for twenty twenty five, the weighted average cost of capital would be five point four six one percent. And for twenty twenty six would be five point four seven nine percent. The utilities work very closely with the finance team and take into consideration a couple of items when determining how to fund capital projects. First would be the cost of capital, so we weigh the cost of debt versus the cost of our equity. So this is, it's debt is typically cheaper, however, it does increase the financial risk to the utility. Second, risk management, highly levered can lead to financial instability, especially if cash flows fluctuate from year to year and the utility's ability to pay back that long term debt. Third would be strategic goals. The choice of financing also needs to align with long term strategic goals as far as growth, as well as current market conditions. The city also looks for grant opportunities. So if we're able to lever or find grant opportunities from other levels of government, we will also pursue that as a funding mechanism. So determining the revenue requirement. So this, all of these inputs that I talked about earlier go into determining the revenue requirement.
Jared, I'm gonna interrupt to you for a moment, and we have council asking.
Sorry, Jared, and you're right in my wheelhouse as a banker, so I'm sorry for this. I apologize in advance. So you're in the previous slide, you talk about the weighted average cost of capital. I get that. So that's all prescribed direction from the AUC, correct? So not presuming that not every utility is exactly the same in terms of infrastructure deficit, infrastructure needs, capital requirements, et cetera. How does that come into the calculation then? Is that presuming that you're maintaining? Because there's got to be constants here, right? So so think about a utility that's fully funded in their infrastructure, life's good, no, no major deficits versus one that has longstanding or stranded assets or or some other stuff that's going on that really needs a cash infusion in order to become efficient, get all that sort of thing. So two different models, but yet we've got the same formula. So help me understand, is there any, I don't know, wiggle room or whatever? Or is that, are you talking about minimal, that's what you need for AUC? And we could, based on our our needs, if we had an infrastructure deficit, we might have to actually be a larger percent than that? Is that, you know what I'm saying? How does that get arrived to on every individual utility that has various levels of infrastructure deficits or or capital costs that they need?
Great question. So through the chair to Councilor Herschel. I'll answer part of the question. So the city's fortunate enough, when we borrow money through ACFA, we actually have very favorable interest rates. So as you can see up there, our fifteen year average rate is three point two one eight percent for twenty twenty five. So that's probably a good news story from the utility perspective is that we do have favorable long term financing. To your point about how other utilities run as far as whether they lever or don't lever or their their life cycle within their asset. And I'll get into a little bit of that in the the next slide, actually talks a little bit about how that's calculated. So that return is calculated based on the net book value of your assets. So if you have old assets that haven't been replaced, you're not going to earn a big as big of a return. So it really puts you in a tough spot because you're not earning a return to put cash into the bank so that you can reinvest. If you have a new piece of infrastructure, you're able to make a return on that infrastructure. So you've invested capital, you've either taken out debt or a combination of debt and your your equity to fund that project. And that's where you're able to earn that return. The flip side is, and and this is a good news story, is we apply and get grants for projects as well. Those projects don't go into the rate base, so those are considered contributed assets. So the the one that's top of mind that is just being completed, the residuals handling facility. Good news story, we received a significant amount of grant funding for that project, so that didn't increase our rate base. Although it is a city asset, we did have to put some money into it. But we are responsible for the ongoing operating of that that facility. So hopefully that answers your question. I think some of those questions will come out through the next slide.
It will, because I do recognize you're just using the, basically saying, hey, we don't, AUC doesn't want us to get an offside on our equity position, on our leverage, right? So I get that. So we need to maintain sixty three percent on debt. We can't go any higher than that. Based on the interest rate, I guess what I'm looking for to, do we hedge those interest rates at all? Like, or do we do any kind of stress test? Because we're sitting at three point two, guess what, prime was seven point two not too long ago. Like, is there, is that on an annual basis that that's, I guess it would be, because that's how you drive on your rates, right? Is that fair?
So because it's the fifteen year average, so I think we have seen interest rate pressure in the last two years. That's why we use the fifteen year rolling average, so.
So it smoothes it out.
It smooths it out. So and we also, as part of the assumptions, we actually, with the government Alberta announcement, I think, last month, that talked about reducing those rates for municipalities, we took that into account as well when we built the utility rates, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just before you proceed, I'm not a banker in my day job, but to build on Councilor Herschel's point, I was thinking about that weighted average cost capital and the the percentages based on AUC algorithms or percentages. So for example, last night, we we had to do, we had to take four point some million out of working capital to deal with the offside hot section of one of the turbines. So we we took that out of the working capital. Does that change the weighted average then for the following year? Or is that a rolling weighted average change? Or how does yesterday's deviation that was unanticipated but necessary affect that weighted average capital calculation?
Good question. Thank you. Councilor Dubinowski, so because it's Genco, this is, we're focusing just on the rate base side. So if that was, say, let's say it was Grayson's Group, it was electric distribution, that would come into our rate model. But the the example that you just used is a hot section that would affect Genco's financial statement. They don't follow this principle, they're deregulated market. So if something like that occurred in a rate based utility, we would bring forward a budget amendment similar to what Genco did, and we would build that into our utility rates into the future.
Thank you.
So this kind of goes to your question, Councilor Herschel. This is a very high overview, there's lots of moving parts that we work through. But the first part of the equation, it represents the cash operating expenses. So this includes the day to day operations, cost to run the utility. So your salary and wages, contracted services, internal allocations, materials and supplies, all your cash expenses. However, it does exclude the principal and interest associated with any debt that the utility has for the capital that is employed. The second part of the equation is the return on and return of capital assets. So these are assets that the city has purchased, but it does exclude those contributed assets. So grant funded, third party or developer contributed assets. So if a private or a developer comes in and builds a subdivision, those assets are not included. And when they are turned over to the city as part of the asset base. The depreciation of the assets, as well as the return on the assets, is the regulated portion of the calculation from the previous slide. It is then applied to the net book value of the internally owned utility assets. The combination of these elements make up the revenue requirement. So when we get to the the operating budgets where it says gas distribution needs fifteen million dollars, that is, these are all the inputs that came into determining what that revenue requirement was. The next step after we've determined the revenue requirement is to allocate that revenue requirement to the various customers. Um, each utility has different customer classes. Uh, most customer classes or the most typical customer classes are residential, commercial, manufacturing and industrial. These costs are then allocated based on cost causation, so the number of customers within each customer class. The volumes or cubic meters of water that's sold, or the tons of garbage that's collected, or uh crosses at the landfill, kilowatt-hours of electricity that's sold, or the gigajoules of natural gas that are sold. And so those components are then further broken down. And so we allocate costs to fixed charges uh as well as usage or variable charges. A portion of the revenue requirement goes into each of those, so that fifteen million dollars is then split between what's fixed, what's variable. Um, which then gets divided by for the fixed charges based on the number of customers. So for example, a solid waste utility uh collects garbage, uh, and that service is charged per day. As garbage and recycling collection is not weighed at that time. However, at the landfill, the majority of items that are entering the landfill are weighed and charged at a variable or usage weight. Usage and variable charges are calculated based on the volume within each customer class, so for example, the water utility would base it on the cubic meters uh, number of cubic meters sold, electric is based on kilowatt-hours or KVA of demand depending on the customer class. And natural gas is allocated based on the number of gigajoules. So that's a lot of information um about utility rates, that's just the theory, we haven't even got into the budget part yet, but um. I think I wanna point mostly the public and council, I think there's a lot of great information that our communication engagement and marketing team have put on our city's website. Um, so it can be found um on our website under home property and utility section. Um, the understanding your utility bill provides great information on each individual line item on the utility bill and provides an explanation. Um, in addition to the information that's on the website, customers can sign up for eutility. Um, and utility isn't just a paperless utility bill. It provides customers with access to a whole host of tools uh through Customer Connect. Um, and those tools provide details to customers on their consumption, they track consumption progress compared to previous month. As well as a library of information and customizable reports, they can even set up alarms, I actually looked at this last night, I was like, oh, I can set an alarm, so when I hit X cubic meters of water, I'll get a text or a email. So awesome information that uh we've been able to pull together uh as a as a utility group. So I'll, and if, uh, I'll pause there if there's any questions or.
Counsel Hersh.
So, so thanks for this and and it, and I I appreciate it. Going back to your, the formula on the revenue requirement, and I'm just looking at cash operating expenses plus depreciation. Plus the regular return on asset, on the asset value from the previous slide, so. I guess I'm wondering, I get, so my my challenge is the depreciation bit. So you, you spend a million dollars on an asset and you depreciate it. Which means basically you're putting us money aside every year to replace that thing. The challenge is that that million-dollar asset you just bought in ten years dollars is gonna be instead of a million dollars, it's gonna be one point five, so how do we make up the delta? On the difference, cause that's gonna be, so on that point, you're not talking about future depreciation or any type of inflationary variables in there. So you could, if you use that model and just straight continued on. Inevitably, you would actually be in a short position over years and years. Again, buying one asset at a million dollars and all of a sudden you depreciate it, you gotta go buy it again, and you don't have enough revenue requirement for the new one point five million dollar purchase. Can you help me? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, um, through the chair to Counselor, so perfect example would be the deep utilities, so water sewer infrastructure as a life of seventy-five years, so a ten-year lifespan is a small increment.
Sure.
Look at seventy-five years, uh, their required investment is that much greater, right? Um, so that, that's, this is just what we're following as far as the AUC principles, as far as how we calculate utility rates. So that's where the return on uh the net book value, I guess, comes in as far as that additional increase or that inflationary pressure that that the utilities are facing.
So what you're saying is that, that profit, I guess, which not even is even really profit, cause you have to carve out some of that money for future buys of future capital requirements, correct?
Yep, and and so our our funding, um, how we fund capital is a conversation with the utility, obviously looking at the the cash balance within each each group, um, and then the cash flow each year, so. Are we reinvesting in sustaining capital, so that cash flow that we earn in it on an annual basis, that gets reinvested into capital infrastructure so that we're not eventually in a infrastructure deficit, if you will.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that, what your slide was, was was through AUC in terms of just having the the ability that it's hardwired, that's your rate return, et cetera. And and from that is the next step, and that's where I'm having trouble with, trying to understand our infrastructure needs. Does that incrementally might have to raise the rate itself to meet that need?
Um, so for twenty-five and twenty-six, the in in the previous budget cycle, that return on equity was actually eight point five percent.
Okay.
So AUC has recognized that there is uh a pressure, a cost pressure in the utility industry. Um, so typically every two, three years, they will review that equity rate. Uh, when I started back with utilities, I believe that rate was six point five percent, that was twelve-ish years ago, so they're they've recognized that utilities, there is inflationary and cost pressure on utilities, and they are deploying their own working capital to invest, so. Um, that equity rate is reviewed uh and updated.
Okay, thank you.
We're good for questions for now, okay. Um, I'll walk through some of the specific items related to utility budgets now, uh, including some of the key assumptions we used, the economic factors uh, that were considered while developing the rates. Um, the city is very fortunate, we have a dedicated team that works hard uh to develop solu- solutions that are data-driven, aligned with industry, industry best practice and ensure that the customer is always top of mind. When administration develops utility rates, we continually continually focus on the customer impact. At the end of the day, we're customers and residents of the city as well. After the initial, initial analysis is complete, we put on our customer hat and we put ourselves in the customer shoes. What would the impact be if I owned a small business? Are these rate increases fair and reasonable? Although there are inputs and formulas, the team here today is constantly reviewing and working with our operational directors and managers and their teams to ensure we're delivering services in the most cost-effective way possible. One of the key uh rate-based assumptions we've used, obviously, uh, we have to, uh, looking back at our previous slides, so customer growth. Um, the community as well as utility customer growth has been modest over the past few years. Each utility has assumed approximately half a percent customer growth in twenty-five and twenty-six. Other factors that im- impact utility rates are volumes. Uh, so for the water utility, we've assumed a two percent reduction over the past five-year average. Um, this is the result of last or this current year. Um, we had increased precipitation as well as volun- voluntary water restrictions were put into place. As a result of those two things, we saw seventeen percent reduction in water consumption uh within our city. For sewer and solid waste, we've assumed a five-year average for volumes. On the electric distribution side, we've assumed a two point six percent reduction in volumes over the five-year average, and this is attributed to less cooling degree days as well as customers being more energy-conscious. Gas distribution has assumed a one point four percent reduction in volumes, and that's attributed to less heating degree days and customers being a little bit more uh conscious with their thermostat. On the environmental utilities aside, we've also applied uh for a carbon credit extension um at the landfill. We're just waiting to hear if that's been granted, but we've assumed that it will be, and that's part of our budget assumptions for twenty-five and twenty-six. So now we get to the operating budgets, now we're getting into the the meat and the numbers, so. The twenty-five, twenty-six operating budgets were developed with an emphasis on affordability while ensuring the long or short and long-term financial sustainability of each utility. Each utility is faced with different challenges, whether it be a new multimillion-dollar facility at the water treatment plant to prioritizing infrastructure, maintenance and repairs, or navigating new and future regulatory requirements. The operating inputs are key to developing utility rates. We will walk through specific customer impacts later in the presentation, but at a very high level, the aggregated uh residence utility bill will increase approximately one percent. Commercial rates will increase by approximately five percent, and industrial customers will increase by approximately four percent compared to twenty-twenty-four rates. So I'm gonna explain what each of these line items includes, so that um you can ask, ask questions related to specific line items, but the base operating expenses uh is really kind of the that operating expense uh item that I showed in the revenue requirement calculation, so this reflects salary and wages um, as well as annual inflation assumption of two point three percent on salary and wages. Contracted and services and materials and supplies were held flat at twenty-twenty-four levels. New operating initiatives uh relate to either one-time operating projects or new ongoing operating initiatives. Other expenses represent interest on long-term debt, amortization on assets as well as asset retirement obligations. Internal recoveries and charges are internal transfers between departments, and these represent the utility's cost of receiving internally-provided services. This ensures costs are being applied to the correct funding source, whether it be municipal property taxes or utility rates and aids in capturing the full cost of the organization's internal services to support business decision-making. The base operating budget increase for water um is basically uh the result of the explanation I provided about inflation. But they also have a new uh water or residuals handling facility opening. Um, this will come online in Q one of twenty twenty-five, so there's some cost pressure there as far as operating a new facility um, and the chemicals and and whatnot to to run that facility. Whoops, the new operating initiative in twenty twenty, the big one in twenty twenty-five relates to a water treatment master plan update. So they need to do that on a, I think, a five-year cadence, uh, as well as supervisor control and data acquisition. SCADA, also known as SCADA, uh cybersecurity updates that need to occur in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, which are regulatory. Other expense increase uh represent additional interest and amortization associated with the capital program. Uh, and we'll walk through the capital requests uh later in the presentation. And the net change in internal charges relates to organizational costs or changes in allocation methodology from departments providing support to the utility. The base operating expenses for sewer uh relate to the budget assumptions that were built in uh as well as uh union step increases for salaries and wages. Um, other expenses, the modest decrease uh is a result of no large or significant capital projects uh in the sewer utility for twenty-five and twenty-six, aside from the regular sustaining capital program. As a result, interest and amortization remain relatively unchanged. For solid waste, this will be uh one of the bigger items that we can discuss as well, so the base operating expense uh increase. Uh, there's some increases due to the inflationary or some assumptions. However, the significant decrease is related to the residential recycling delivery model being changed effective April first of twenty twenty-five, uh, as a result of the extended producer responsibility. Uh, at that time, the contract will transition to a third-party provider, and the city will no longer be obligated to pay uh that service. The new operating initiative relates to a larger uh capacity water truck at the landfill for dust control, fire suppression and the compo- and to support the composting program. Other expenses uh increase as a result of large capital, which we'll see uh later in the presentation, and we'll walk through that um, in a few more slides. And I'll ask Jasmine to come up and talk about electric and gas distribution.
Hello, everyone. Um, so electric distribution. Um, as you can see, so we've got, um, our base operating expenses uh relate to salary and wage budgets. Um, high level reflect an annual assumed inflation increase of two point three percent. Um, including an adjustment of administrative overhead and regulatory compliance positions. Generally contracted services, materials, uh, were held at twenty-twenty-four amounts with uh some inflationary pressures as well. Other expenses, um, as Jared alluded to, represent um our interest in long-term debt, amortization asset retirement obligation, um, asset retirement obligations as well, which are all dependent on capital. Uh, we get into, we do a deep dive on on the capital portion um later in the slides. And our internal recoveries are those internal or interdepartmental transfers um amongst our departments. In summary, um, and our electric distribution budget is an austerity budget. Um, this, this is very stringent. Um, we have a renewed focus on asset management. Um, kinda to go back to the the previous comments about um asset management and um, renewing aging infrastructure. Um, electric distribution is certainly um at the, at the heart of that, experiencing that. Um, we're also experiencing enhanced regulatory compliance initiatives as well. So on the, the gas distribution side, um, similarly uh, base operating expenses relate to adjustments uh primarily in third-party transportation contract expenses. Um, salaries and wages flow through here as well, that in include um the annual inflation increases of two point three percent. Um, but there was some offset um due to some operational reductions um that we were able to capitalize on in contracted services, materials and labor adjustments. Um, our other expenses shown include things like interest on long-term debt and our amortization on assets. Uh, which is due to our capital and and like I said, we'll get into the capital um slides later. Um, to reiterate, uh, is maybe the word of the day, uh, again, this is a stringent um austerity budget. Um, our operation, operation teams um have, have done a great deal of work to um find cost savings, find cost reduction efforts um where possible.
I'm gonna interrupt, at this time, we do have Counselor Robbins with a question.
Thank you very much, and through the chair, um, the other expenses and the asset retirement obligations that are contained within them. I'm just very curious about the calculation of that and where that money goes. I know we're looking at a, a budget, we're saying that this, that expense is included within this budget. But we're not retiring the asset right now, so just how does that flow, I guess, is what I'm looking to find out.
So, thank you for the question, uh, through the chair. Um, so to reiterate the question, you're wondering operating at other expenses. Um, so particularly the asset retirement obligations. Um, electric i- is probably um a good example, just because the amount is is slightly more than gas. But the concept is the same, is um we have a bulk of elec- or buildings that are owned by electric distribution that um have asbestos that we are obligated to handle at a certain point in the future. So our finance team has, has taken these costs, a lot of work has gone into determining just what exactly that future cost obligation will be, um, and it has been spread out essentially. Um, over, I believe, until twenty, I think it's like a twenty-five-year period that we're slowly, I guess, saving for a rainy day, if you will. We know that we are required to. We know that we are required to pay these obligations in the future. Gas is a similar situation where we have these obligations, but the dollar value that we are seeing at the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six budget levels are very minor. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, continue.
Yes, it does, thank you very much. So just so I'm very clear, so it's not money out of pocket in this moment. It's sort of like an amortization, it's out of pocket over a length of time. There's not a requirement to pay that expense this year, it's just calculated out over the lifetime of the asset.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hirsch?
And so you're, I mean, you're absolutely right. Same thing as depreciation, they call it a non cash expense. But in the reality of use a gas well, for example, you've got ten gas wells and you're out of the business, the amount of money it costs now to abandon ten wells is X amount of dollars. We need to have that money available at that prescriptive time. So even though we say it's kind of not money coming out of our pocket, that's why you have to allocate. You have to move it over to have that as the rainy day. If in fact, something was to happen, we have to actually have that cash available. So I just kind of wanted to be clear. People, some people are watching it saying like, that's not money that we're spending. In fact, we have to protect it because we actually have to use it potentially in the future. So even though we contributed over incremental one twenty fifth at a time, it's still money that has to be, I guess earmarked, and but it's not, you're right, it's not going anywhere out the door, but it has to be available and that sort of thing. So if I can have the floor still, I've got one question. You use the rider of two point three percent on inflation. Is that, how's the number brought from? Is that, where's the source of the two point three? Is that inflation from some prescribed from Bank of Canada? Is that something, where are we grabbing that two point three advice number on? I see Aaron coming now.
So.
Because I know, we're applying it, we're applying it everywhere.
I will, that's okay, I'll hand it off to Aaron to answer that question.
The two point three that was mentioned is a rounded figure. It's for twenty twenty five, I believe it's two point two five and two percent for twenty twenty six. We made an assumption, many of the, many of our union groups are currently in negotiation right now. The one group that we do know is we know QP. And so we've based our inflationary assumptions for all of salary and wages on the QP agreement. So that's where that number comes from. That's not applied to materials or contracted services, all those were held flat at zero.
Really?
Yes.
And pray tell, being at zero, but there would have been inflation factors on those type of purchases too, correct?
That's correct, yeah, that was part of the effort this year. As we mentioned, even with the municipal budget, is we were looking for ways to reduce cost. And one of those ways, instead of cutting budget, was to hold the budget at the twenty four level and then ask department directors to find ways to mitigate that.
And that's the austerity piece that you referred to?
That's part of it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other questions, continue.
So at a roll up level, the consolidated rate based utilities operating budget reflects a surplus before transfers of approximately eleven point six million in twenty twenty five and twelve point four million in twenty twenty six. Now note that these funds are used to fund long term debt as well as fund sustaining capital initiatives within each utility.
Thanks Jasmine. So the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six capital budget, we're going to walk through that now. So we're going to outline sustaining and capital, sustaining and growth capital requests for each of the utilities. So sustaining capital requests are for the replacement of aging assets and infrastructure. As assets reach the end of their useful life, it's prudent to replace them before they fail. Growth capital requests are for new facilities or new services to the community or to increase capacity to support growth in the local economy. The water utility, we've got a couple of different columns here. So the twenty three, twenty four budget was the total request in that budget cycle. And then the net change is the difference between the totals. So for twenty five and twenty six, sustaining capital for water utilities requesting eighteen point two million. This request relates to investment in nonlinear infrastructure primarily, which includes booster stations as well as reservoir rehabilitation work that's required. On the growth capital side, there's a couple of big projects. So the one that I'll, a couple that I'll highlight is Kipling Street Main Twinning. So this project services approximately seven thousand customers, is about six point three million. So that's to create a redundant line to service the south part of the community. Third Street Southeast Water Main Replacement of one point three million. Harlow Transmission Main Interconnection of about one point two million, as well as cybersecurity upgrades at the water treatment plant of about two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. The funding for each of those requests is highlighted below. On the sewer side, the increase in sustaining capital relates to a couple larger ticket items at the treatment plant. So influent channel screens and grit removal upgrades, as well as site improvements along the South Saskatchewan Riverbank to ensure the integrity of the plant. There's no growth capital requests for sewer in this budget cycle. On solid waste, the sustaining capital budget includes replacing carts and bins as well as litter control measures at the landfill. There are a couple significant capital or growth capital requests in this area. So the food compost or food waste composting facility at the landfill, nine point five million. Landfill airspace optimization and cell design work of about one point five million. And a water truck upgrade of about fifty thousand dollars represent the growth capital initiatives. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on the food waste composting facility because it is the largest growth capital request in the budget. Implementation of the food waste program is critical for municipalities with limited landfill airspace. There are several reasons why this project is important for the City of Medicine Hat. Airspace conservation. Food waste takes up a significant portion of landfill airspace. By diverting it from the landfill, the city can extend the lifespan of our existing facility and delay the new, delay the need for a new landfill. Cost savings. By reducing the volume of waste sent to landfills, municipalities can lower disposal costs and avoid potential fines associated with exceeding landfill capacity. Environmental impact. Decomposing food waste produces methane, a potential greenhouse gas. Reducing food waste helps mitigate climate change and decreases the environmental footprint of waste management. Resource recovery. Food waste can be turned into valuable compost material, which can then be used as fertilizer to produce more food. This supports a circular economy and promotes sustainability. Community engagement. Food waste programs can raise awareness about sustainability and encourage community partnership and reducing waste at home, fostering a culture of environmental responsibility. A food waste program is a proactive step towards better waste management, environmental protection, as well as community well being. The future rate impact of this project will be part of the twenty five or twenty seven, twenty eight budget cycle as there will be operational costs associated with providing this service to the community.
So electric distribution capital. A new initiative within sustaining capital budget planning aligns with initiatives elsewhere within the energy division pertaining to lifecycle replacements of long lead assets. In this case, it pertains to high voltage transformers within substations which require two and a half to three year delivery times, meaning detailed predictive planning and fund allocation toward assets which will not arrive for several years. Ongoing phased progression of transmission system reinvestments, particularly the Southwest Substation and the East Ring Enhancement are included in the sustaining capital. Ongoing sustaining capital programs include our federally regulated meter replacement programs, various lifecycle replacements for high volt or medium voltage transformers, major equipment within substations, overhead and underground cable replacements, power poles and various hardware attachments. All these investments are part of a robust asset management program intended to maintain sustainable services to our customers. New services in electric distribution are third party funded, and the reduction that you see in growth capital there is due to the delayed timing of the substation. So on the gas distribution front, sustaining capital here relates to ongoing lifecycle reinvestment, again, as part of our robust asset management program. Example of reinvestments include detailed meter replacement programs that are federally regulated requirements, lifecycle replacements of aging infrastructure and piping systems in low pressure, medium pressure and high pressure systems. Projects are selected based on detailed asset inspections and system modeling to optimize and prioritize focus areas within the distribution system. Funding for cathodic protection programs are included within this project that look to mitigate possible corrosion within our underground systems. Finally, funding is allocated to work collaborative, collaboratively, excuse me, within our other departments, meaning environmental utilities and municipal works to replace infrastructure in common project areas. So we, as a city, can reduce the overall impact to our customers by only excavating once, rather than on multiple occasions, saving service disruptions and ultimately costs. Similarly, the new services listed for gas distribution are third party funded. At the utility capital summary level, the rate based utilities are requesting a total of ninety five point nine million dollars in capital over the next two years. This represents a significant investment in the essential services that our community and customers rely upon on a daily basis. Seventy three point six million represents sustaining capital required to replace or reinvest in aging infrastructure, and twenty two point three million dollars is required to support growth in our community. Just to highlight, one of the particular deferred, deferred growth capital items relating to electric distribution was the proposed city funded transformer only upgrades required to accommodate residential and commercial electrical service capacity upgrades. These have not been included in the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six capital requests.
Just on that last slide, actually. So I was on the committee when that first came forward, and obviously I appreciate in an austerity, under austerity measures, you have to look at every single line item. So it would be simplistic for me to say that when I look at those annual amounts in comparison to the totality of the ask, it's pretty small. Other than looking at, looking at it line by line and coming to the determination that these are not essential or have the capacity to be removed, was there any other thoughts behind that? I guess my only concern is that, and certainly I'm not the expert, but we know that the demand for these upgrades and some kind of a cost share component to it with other utilities and other communities is being had. And the removal of this just sets us back as far as I see it. So I do have some concern, but I'm not asking for behind the scenes chatter, but was there more than just line by line observation that led to this being removed? If you're willing to answer it, great, if not, we'll move on.
I think, because that decision ultimately, I think, fell at the managing director level. Perhaps I could pass it over to Managing Director Pankos to answer that.
Thank you, and through the chair to Counselor Dumanowski. Essentially, you're absolutely right, we were looking to try to keep costs as low as possible, absorbing inflationary increases other than salary increases. And otherwise, recognizing that particularly with some volume reduction that also has upward pressure on rates, we were doing what we can to reduce. So it wasn't so much that we removed this from an existing budget. This was a nice to have add on option that we considered as growth capital. It remains an option for council, it's just one that we, as staff, didn't see a necessity to add to rates at this time. But entire, we wanted to make sure that council was aware that it was not included because we know there was interest on this project and would be at council discretion to advise whether it's a fit or not.
Just before I recognize Counselor McGrogan, I appreciate that response, and it's a nice add on. And I think that's one way to lend the verbiage to it. But for me, again, I know, leading up to the decision that even had it being contemplated, there is a lot of communication and, communication is the wrong word, but banter out in other, in this committee and other communities when it comes to the electrification necessities that are evolving. And in saying that, obviously, there are upgrades that are often required, which in a lot of other comparable communities is either borne by or paid back slowly or there's some kind of a cost sharing component. So I see this as a disappointment, certainly that's my opinion, but thank you for that answer. Counselor McGrogan.
Yeah, again, just sharing the, I guess, disappointment, if you want to call it that. And what I'm wondering when I see this is, if we look at, and I guess I'm asking, if we look at the bigger picture and say, are we stunting development in existing neighborhoods? People that want to add suites and things that are going to bring us more tax money and more property tax? Is this maybe a, I guess I'm not, I'm not here to debate it right now, but is it something that we should consider moving forward around, you know, again, a cost sharing method, some form of production? If we know, for instance, that the model is at one point going to increase our tax growth and our utility usage and all those other things as well. So just something to consider, just throwing it out there. It's, we hear, this is probably a big one that I hear all the time, so thank you.
Managing Director Pankos.
Thank you, and through the chair, certainly, we do have a briefing note put together for this topic. And if it's helpful for council, we can bring that back as part of the broader package, and motions could be made on that basis. We did look at the broader trend of electrification. We do think that at some point, there may be value for the rate payers to pick up individual capacity increases. Thus far, we've taken the cost causation approach that I believe Manager Dickey had spoken about for cost plus rate making principles, that's a key principle. And when an individual property is looking to benefit from a capacity increase, that triggers the cost causation, which means they are the one paying for it. However, this is a little bit unique, usually there's ten or so properties that could benefit from that capacity increase. So there is an argument that could be made that it should be picked up by the common good of the rate payer. In the briefing note, we do have jurisdictional review to indicate where the trend is going, and there is room for us to move in this area. It was a matter of timing on the electrification, we're not yet seeing electrification driving it. The statistics, I believe, we do have included in the briefing note, but most of them are triggered, for instance, by the addition of a hot tub or those sorts of things, as opposed to typical electrification or even secondary suite additions. But we do have more information that we can share in a detailed briefing note that may be helpful for council's consideration on this topic.
Just dovetailing that, you beat me to it, you said it much more eloquently than I could ever say it. So it's not that it can't proceed, but you're correct, Managing Director, it'll be borne by the It'll be borne by the, the resident or whomever wants to trigger it. Or I, I think to Counselor McGrogan's point, I've certainly, I haven't heard it as much lately, but I heard it a lot in the last year or two around, around this. And, and people draw comparisons to other communities where there aren't cost sharing measures or, or payment payback measures that are still allow for it and allow them to pay their portion, but it's not them bearing the, the cost for, for ten utility holders, for example, or entire section only because they're the one that are triggering it. So other municipalities, I understand it are, are finding unique ways or the utility holder in those areas are finding unique ways to make that happen. And I, I'd like to think we, we have the capacity to do the same. I know everything in line adds up. And so I'm, your comments aren't lost on me, but I, I, I'm going to hold quiet for now on this, but I might bring it back at some point or ask to be, have it brought back. Thank you. I don't see any other speakers. We'll continue.
Okay. So what everybody's been waiting for. So we reviewed the inputs, used to calculate the utility rates for twenty five and twenty six. We'll now walk through the rate changes and how they impact each of the utilities revenue requirements as well as what's new or what we're proposing for twenty five and twenty six. We also provide overall impact to three different customer classes to show you how medicine at utility rates compared to other municipalities. It's important to keep in mind, and I think this gets lost to the utility payers, our bills represent five different utilities where most other municipalities or other utility providers are providing one utility. And so, yeah, our bills are complicated. There's lots of information on them. But I do think that we have tools available that will help customers understand their bills if they choose to inquire about more information. So I'll start with the water utility. So new for water rates in twenty twenty five is the recommendation to implement a fixed water rate based on the water meter size. So this initiative aligns with best practice and is consistent with what other municipalities in Alberta and North America currently do. In addition to changes to the fixed rates, we're also recommending implementation of a seasonal water rate for residential customers as well as an increased irrigation rate. These recommendations will encourage water conservation and support the city's environmental framework action plan to develop a rate calculation that balances cost recovery, profitability as well as resource protection. The changes in the fixed rate and the residential irrigation consumption changes will be phased in. This approach ensures that customers are not impacted by the change and won't experience a significant rate shock. We're also proposing an environmental conservation charge, which will provide sustainable funding to support hat smart water conservation initiatives. This program was launched earlier this year in May with one time funding of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The, the program has been well utilized during the year. And this proposal will ensure the residential customer have a program to support the purchase of water conservation products into the future. The waterfall chart on the left or on, yeah, on the right, I guess, represents the changes in the annual revenue requirement from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. So the significant changes are increased operating costs at the residuals handling facility, which will come online in early twenty twenty five. The water treatment master plan update, inflationary pressures that we had talked about earlier, decreased internal transfers as well as increased asset base. So that's the return on and return of the capital within the utility. On the sewer side, there's no changes to the sewer rate methodology within this budget cycle. However, we do plan to bring forward a recommendation for changes as part of the twenty twenty seven budget cycle. The waterfall chart below indicates the changes from the twenty twenty four revenue requirement to the twenty twenty five revenue requirement. So inflationary pressures, water, wastewater plant maintenance, a hundred thousand, increased internal transfers as well as an increased asset base. That's the return on the regulated portion of the revenue requirement.
I'm going to interrupt you. Eric Clark, do you have a question? You had your, I believe you had your hand up.
I did, but I think I figured it out. I was just, I was just curious about the colors of the bars and why they were different in the waterfall chart. And I will admit, I don't fully understand waterfall chart, so.
Okay. So the difference in color, the red or pink, I can't, it's hard to tell on different screens. Salmon is a negative number. So reflects a decrease in a cost.
Got it. Thank you.
And the waterfall chart, so let's say zero would be where we're starting at in twenty twenty four. So eight hundred and ten thousand increase in costs. And then six hundred thousand increase in water treatment plant study. Five hundred and fifty seven in inflation, a decrease in internal transfers of four hundred and forty eight and that an increase of one fifty five. So all of those changes, if you added them up, would add up to the one.
Got it.
Six, seven, five, one point six, seven, five million. So that's just kind of walking you through what are the changes between the current budget or the current utility rates and what we're proposing for twenty twenty five.
Just on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mary Clark. The eight hundred and ten water residuals handling, so just going to ask a dumb question. Is that an increase over what we had planned? That's additional cost or is that bringing it on stream new cost?
That's the new operating costs associated with bringing the facility online.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hirsch.
So, so to get this straight, so, and for the taxpayer to understand, so the government of Alberta funded the capital of the water residual plant, but we have to fund the operating.
Correct.
Okay. Interesting. And then the other piece on the minus four forty eight on the internal transfer, that was a result of, of just savings on the, on the water utility? Because it's, it's a negative number. So you're saying you found savings in that?
So internal transfers are between different departments, so.
That accounting charges you for et cetera, legal, if you've got, I get that piece. So why is it less money?
I believe there was a reduction in a group that was within the water utility that is no longer within the water utility. So I think that's the reason. I'd have to get the exact details, but that's essentially what it is.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
A whole bunch of departments.
Yeah, I'm with you. It's just a tangible number. Like if you're saying it's almost half a million dollars that was reduced. So, okay, thanks.
Just before we continue, just because Counselors brought it up. So the, the water residuals plant wasn't covered one hundred percent by the profits.
The capital portion?
The capital portion.
No, we did do a budget amendment, I believe, last year due to.
Due to what the cost sharing was, just for the millions of people watching on TV land it. Because the delta we had to absorb, there was no, no sharing whatsoever of that.
So that was primarily related to inflationary pressures, obviously, in the construction industry. I'm not sure if Manager Garland or Managing Director Bohan had further information.
Managing Director Bohan, your name came up.
Yes, I was just trying, trying to find it for you. I maybe I can get that for you by the end of the, or before the end of the conversation today.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll walk through solid waste. So the big salmon number is the decrease in the extended producer responsibility. So that will be removed effective April first of twenty twenty five when that comes into effect. So these costs will be transitioned to the retail customer space as producers of the product will now be responsible for the full lifecycle of the products and their packaging. So that is the big reduction. We have inflationary pressures. We have another decrease in internal transfers and an increase in our asset base. So the net decrease for solid waste revenue requirement is about just over one million dollars, but that is primarily driven by the change in the regulation for the recycling.
So to walk through the, the change in revenue, revenue requirement for electric distribution. The increase in asset base as related to weighted average cost of capital and on the net book value. We have a step change in of one point two million. This is due to inflationary increases as per the established budget guidelines, reallocation of administrative overhead and partially offset by internal recoveries. There's been a downward adjustment of capitalization of staff wages to projects and reallocation of additional staff resources to UDS due to enhanced regulatory compliance initiatives. Note that UDS conducted workforce adjustments this year going into twenty twenty five, which resulted in an overall decrease of FTE when compared to twenty twenty three. Some FTE were reallocated to ensure greater focus on regulatory compliance, given the rapidly evolving reliability and cybersecurity needs within the electric industry. We are seeing some decrease in our savings in, in internal recoveries, just reflecting the, the reallocation of admin overhead, partially offset by some adjustments to other corporate departments, reductions in contracted services. This is due to reductions in internal equipment usage and materials based on historical actuals and slight increase in materials largely driven by inflation. Through all of that, our net revenue requirement increase is roughly one million. On the gas distribution side, again, we, we have an increase in our increase at our, our asset base related to the weighted average cost of capital and the net book value. The large trigger here in gas, and we mentioned it earlier, is the transportation contracts piece driving that total increase in revenue requirement of roughly one point two million. To do a deep dive, all other expenses favorable, unfavorable variances pertaining to wages, contracted services, material inflation pressures and internal transfers all generally net to zero based on some operational efficiencies. As you can see, the large driver is the transportation contracts. To maybe shed some light on the transportation contracts, where that comes about is, as you know, the city produces our own gas as supply to our customers. We also procure gas outside of the city. The contracts required to procure that outside gas is a combination of three things. One, we're seeing an increased volume required generally as, as a result of our depleting production internally. The transportation tariffs on that procured gas are increasing in twenty twenty five and onward. And the mitigation market that we've been able to capitalize on in prior years has essentially dried up. It's not as lucrative as it once used to be. So unfortunately, those three levers kind of generate, generate the perfect storm of, of this increase in cost expense. Moving on, so before we jump into the utility rate impact slides where we kind of dissect the different impacts to the different rate classes, we just wanted to reiterate the purpose of, of today. And the purpose of, of these slides are on the rate based utilities, meaning the distribution charges. The, the commodity rates are completely separate. So the commodity rate setting methodology is going to continue as status quo, meaning our single interim commodity rate for both gas and electricity will continue while we await the results of the third party energy business review. The upcoming utility rate impact slides do not include any commodity portion of a user's bill.
Just before we proceed, I, if we can go back to one slide. So a number of times the word austerity was used and it's clearly on the, the chart as well. So I think conventional understanding of austerity and what it means. I, I just want to have gained some assurance that we're not hot gluing or, or otherwise some deferred projects or measures that are compromising the, the utilities as we know them. I mean, austerity is not a bad word. It, it just means we've done a deeper dive or the management have and have identified ways to, to save, which is to the, to the rate payer, taxpayer inadvertently, good news typically. They see that as welcome news, especially when it keeps rates lower. So just, can you qualify when we're talking about austerity budgets that we're not bundling a bunch of things, putting it in our bag and, and pushing it forward to some future point where we will have no choice but to have that bubble burst, in which case we're, we're now in, in trouble or in some ways compromising any of our utility levers, as you refer to them? Unless we are, in which case this is your chance to, to say yes, the bubble is coming.
So through the chair, good question. I, to summarize, I feel like our team did a balancing act of affordability while not hindering any services, any service level and not hindering any preventative maintenance, not hindering any safety by that means. Perhaps Director Mosh would want to speak to that a little bit more.
Just before I recognize you, Director Mosh, City Manager Mitchell.
Managing Director Bohan has an answer to your question whenever we're done with this topic.
Go ahead.
And also, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Mary Clark, I'll come to you in one moment. Director Mosh.
And perhaps before Director Mosh speaks, I do want, I thank you for bringing this up because if we look at that eight point two percent on the right, that's what we were facing in addition to an additional increase to the rate pressure because of volume impact. With lower, lower volumes, that means the denominator is going down and the total revenue requirement is spread across fewer people. So in addition to that revenue requirement increase, we were seeing a further increase from a volume impact. So it, we were quite cognizant that this has considerable pressure on the rate payer. You will notice there is nothing in there in terms of cost pressure, not inflation and not even salary increases. So this is a very concerted effort to try to absorb inflationary and salary pressures. We aren't impacting the capital side. We're doing what we can as per normal business practices on the capital side. But operationally, it means that we will be taking on some risk. We have historically had better service than our peers operationally, but I do want to make sure that Director Mosh has a good opportunity to supplement this one as well as anything he'd like to add on the electric side as well.
So just before I recognize you, I have Mary Clark and Counselor Hirsch. Can, can we have the directors speak to this first before we go to your questions? You're okay with that? Okay, Director Mosh.
Thank you. Through the chair. So when, when we say austerity, this really is about ensuring sustainable services, so ensuring our regulatory compliance, ensuring that our basic maintenance and our preventative maintenance is completed as part of a very robust and sustainable asset management program. However, we do not include anything that one consider as a want. So there's very limited growth capital. There's very limited new programs purposely recognizing, specifically, for instance, in the electric side, that we will have significant transmission system investments coming in the, the coming budget cycles, for instance, the Southwest substation, the East Ring enhancement project. So we are very, very much focused on controlling costs as much as practical while ensuring that we have sustainable services to our customers.
That's the beauty of being the chair. I have a question, but I'm going to recognize Mary Clark and then Counselor Hirsch, and then I'll. That's the beauty of being the chair. I have a question, but I'm going to recognize Mary Clark and then Counselor Hirsch, and then I'll come back. Mary Clark.
Thank you through the chair. My question was, how is that possible? Just maintaining the same service levels and nothing changes except for we're spending less money. I'm just, I guess, curious as to how that would be possible.
I think Director Mosh here, now let's see, take it away.
Certainly through the, through the chair to Mary Clark, I'll use some examples. So for instance, in gas distribution, we were able to offset inflationary increases in wages and other inflationary increases in, in costs by reviewing things such as how some of our buildings were, were being allocated and some of those allocations going to the tax side through lease payments, that, that sort of thing. In electric distribution, we were able to review some of our services. I'll use an example such as utility locates. So electric distribution moved to a contracted services model this year for utility locates this past summer, where we were able to maintain a, the same service level for utility locates by using a contracted vendor that can provide that service at perhaps a little bit more economical rate. So we're using our power alignment, our journeyman power alignment for higher value activities such as maintenance on the actual power lines. Another example is leveraging existing standing offer agreements through the Parks and Recreation Department for tree trimming and using that contract to perform our tree trimming duties in, in, to ensure sustainable services to our electric distribution lines rather than, again, using power alignment. So using certified and accredited arborists that are trained to be able to trim trees in proximity to power lines but at a more economical rate rather than using power alignment. So again, it's adjusting to our highest value. So adjusting our resources to our highest value maintenance while leveraging other contracted opportunities, both in the city and interdepartmentally, to, to ensure that we still maintain the same level of service but at a, a reduced cost.
Mary Clark, does that answer your question?
Those are excellent examples. Yes, thank you very much. I think maybe I was getting a, a little hung up on the term austerity, which usually means like stern, deep cuts to government spending. And which I'm not, like, if we can find the types of financial solutions that Mr. Moch is talking about, that's great. But it often affects service levels, so I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, Counselor Hirsch.
Thanks. And, and against, at the end of the day, I guess the point is, is that there's found efficiencies. So that's great. So, you know, even in, you know, as an extrapolation of this, people in industries are finding technological advances to save on costs. Even the introduction of AI, all that kind of stuff. So when you talk about service level agreements, you can actually maintain it as long as you embrace, I don't know, technology or any type of other efficiencies. So that's always a moving target. So I appreciate the effort there. And I guess I'm still getting hung up a little bit. And austerity for me is appreciated in the fact that I just resonate, I'm glad you're at the podium. Maybe we talked about transformer costs. Can you update the listener to the millions and millions of people out there of what the transformer costs were back in the day and actually what they are going to be either forecasted or that they are now? Just to give a tiniest illustration where I'm a bit concerned. And, and maybe you can allay my concern that, that the amount of massive inflation on some of these priced assets, which is, which is you're saying to us, we got that covered because all I heard was you're covering off staffing levels, et cetera. So maybe illustrate, and this is an important point to the, to the rate payers out there of what you guys deal with in terms of just an illustration of a simple transformer. So over to you, Director.
Certainly through the chair, Counselor Hirsch. It's a great question, a great example, high voltage transformers. For instance, the utility recently ordered two high voltage transformers. We are seeing generally across the various materials in the electric industry, generally about a 12% per year inflation still. So separate from general inflation, we're seeing about a 12% inflation on materials simply because of the global demand for energy transition and for raw materials. So it's very, very, still very, very elevated and it's taking two to three times longer to receive those, those materials. So something that would be 16 weeks, say in 2019, is now two and a half to three year delivery, as an example. So for high voltage transformers, they did go up well over 50% over two years. So for instance, in the Southwest Substation Project, which was the 20, it was quoted and estimated in for the 22, for 23, 24 budget cycle. It was approximately a 50% increase in transformers. So now we are looking at about a four to $5 million expense per high voltage transformer, where before it would have been in that 1.8 range.
And that's an excellent, I guess, illustration of where we're at. So I, again, I appreciate, and then maybe that's the, the point that you're, what I certainly want to make is that in addition to kind of, we talked about austerity budget and, you know, really trying to make sure that the value is, is there for the, the rate payer. I think it's just illustrative of the fact of what cost the utility is eating in, in an effort to do the austerity to the rate payer. So anyway, that's transformer for you was just staggering that the amount of inflation. And, and again, it's just an illustration because there's all the other purchases that are being made by the city that are seeing such tremendous growth in, in costs. Thanks.
So I, as chair, I'm going to add one more thing. So I'm, I'm glad I brought up the word austerity, even though it had been used and, and good conversation and good examples and, and just overall conversation around that. I, I heard someone talk about, you know, nothing extra. And so one question that came to mind was the, the Kipling redundancy. Some, someone might argue, I'm not arguing, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw that out there for the sake of the conversation that the, the Kipling line building in redundancy. I recall it, it feeds 35% or something of the, of the water supply. So that wouldn't, that, that's an essential redundancy I'm hearing. Even though when you hear redundancy, you often attribute it to an extra. Or one could conclude that it's an extra. Can someone just speak specifically to the Kipling high level, just because it was in the presentation and we are using balance unit against the word austerity? Managing Director Bohan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this particular item was, we've, we've identified about 18 projects in the city that are single points of failure. This is, this is one of them. We've done about half of the design portions of these single points of failure, and you're correct. We have roughly 25, 26,000 households and that serves, I believe, was 13,000 of them. So it's roughly a, a third or so of the population. So this, when we say redundancy, this is, ironically, we had contemplated this repair and brought it forward just before Calgary had their single point of failure collapse. So it was not related directly. It's just something that we had contemplated in our planning.
And you beat me to it. When you think about Calgary and the subsequent changes that needed to happen and never mind the conveniences, never mind the, the water restriction challenges. Montreal also had, I believe, one as well. So I, I, I'm glad that we are thinking forward on that. So will an austerity budget and, and backing up one step, absorbing the costs and keeping them at the same rate is significant. The, the risk in doing that, and I'm just going to say to an average listener might be, well, man, see, you just had to be challenged to do it and you did it. Look what you were able to do. That was, it was tremendous. I, I don't recall ever, ever us being able to achieve this. So this is pretty significant. And I, not that because I'm saying it, it means something more, but I can tell you in the years I've been here, I don't recall that ever happening. So the heavy lifting and deep dive that had to happen in order to, to hold the lines, never mind the, the added pieces that, that have been identified in the presentation is pretty significant. So I wanted to make that point. Will though, however, any of the items being deferred or changed or, or mitigated or removed or otherwise require future budget amendments that would be otherwise normally required? Do we have a, do you have a sense that there will be now a need to make more amendments or changes in the future or look at working capital differently than we have in the past because we are making some of these differences? Again, that's my last question, I think. And then Managing Director Bohan, we got to get back to you with the, the other point you were going to respond to. City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you. And through the chair, I do know that we had quite a few budget amendments and they were not popular. And so through this budget process, we've made sure that our planning and our work and our deep dive has not, will not, outside of the anomalies, be, be met with budget amendments. So that was something that we really took into consideration through the process. And I do agree, it was a lot of work and I, I think the team really took to heart council's wishes and I think they're, they've delivered.
Great, thank you. Counselor Conodle.
Thank you, Counselor Dumandalcy. This is not going to be any sort of deep question or anything of that nature. But I do want to say that I think if we look back to council's initial strategic plan and the key word innovation, I think this can be categorized as that. It's not, it's not creating something new in a tangible way, but I think it is in its essence, being innovative and solving a problem. So I think that, that's really important to acknowledge.
Okay, Managing Director Bohan, you had a chance to look up. And again, I apologize for throwing that at you at the last minute, but it sounds like you have an answer.
Yeah, it's actually not a problem at all. Actually, Aaron brought, sent it to me, but I already had it. So 3.5 million dollars was expended by the city in 2016 and paid for by debenture. The, and then council approved in January of this year, three, an additional 3.85 million for a grand total of 739, 735 million of the total amount expended to date.
On that point though, do we know what percentage our initial 3.5 was of the total project? Was it 10%?
Yeah, it's roughly, I'd say 12%. The initial approval from council was 26 and a half. And that, so that would, I'd say it's roughly 12 to 13%.
Okay, so it's largely a historically typical cost sharing component with the province, never mind the additional costs. So thank you for clarifying that.
You bet.
Counselor Hyder.
Thank you. And through the chair, I just wanted to voice my appreciation for admin and the teams that have, we've had this dance a few times and budgets are not fun. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this and how we're working and collaborating together to see the, the future of the organization. So I just wanted to voice my appreciation.
Okay, I think we have, we're, we're not done, so we're going to keep going. There's a lot of appendices to this slideshow here deck, but I think we're moving. And sorry for that little quick and, and long austerity question, but I think it was worthwhile conversation. Continue.
Thank you. If someone could advance the slides, the clicker is not working. One more, please. Thank you. So this is what everybody's been waiting for, I believe. So the utility bill impact to an average residential customer are highlighted on this slide. So each customer consumes water and energy differently. However, this represents an average residential customer's monthly utility bill impact comparing 2024 rates to the proposed 2025 rates. I'll highlight a couple of things Jasmine mentioned it on the previous slide when she was speaking to it is it does exclude the natural gas and electricity commodity as well as the federal carbon levy on natural gas. We're just focused on the rate based utilities at this point. The reduction in solid waste that we talked about earlier in the presentation reflects the removal of the residential recycling fee effective April 1st of 2025. And we do also include, so from a total utility perspective, there's some ups, some downs. But in, on an aggregated basis, the increase year over year is $3.74, which represents approximately a 2% increase. When you factor in the municipal consent and access fee, which is charged by the municipality, the total utility bill impact, including the municipal consent and access fee is an increase of 1% or $2.95 per month. If you could advance the slide, please. The utility impact to average commercial customers are highlighted here. And again, the assumptions that we've used are highlighted in the column to the far right. Although each customer uses water and energy differently, this is an average commercial customer for 2024 compared to 2025. So we've assumed 222 or 229 cubic meters of water for both the water and sewer calculation. Solid waste, 1.5 yard bin, 43 gigajoules of natural gas and 25 kV of demand and 6,080 kilowatt hours per month. So on average, a commercial customer will see a monthly increase of $70.17, which represents a 5% increase. MCAF will see a slight decrease and that's related to the increase in the distribution tariffs for natural gas and electricity. As those increase, that increase is greater than the increase in the MCAF revenue requirement. It did see a slight decrease year over year. The total utility impact for this customer class, a commercial customer would be approximately 5%. If you could advance the slide, please. Thank you. This utility bill impact reflects an industrial customer. So we've selected the three customers, residential, commercial and industrial. So the volume assumptions are highlighted on the far right column. And in aggregate, it looks like when you look at the total utility bill is approximately a 4% increase. Obviously, the different increases to the different utilities that we walked through earlier. But the assumptions are listed on the far right column. And again, the MCAF shows a modest decrease for a total annual or monthly change year over year of about $2,200 per month or 4%. This is a chart that we provide as part of each budget cycle, but we also update this information on the city's website two times per year. It's found under home and property and utilities, how we compare. So important to highlight here is that we're comparing Medicine Hat rates to other municipalities in Alberta and we're using their 2024, their current utility rates. So the information here, it's important to note that the average residential customer savings when we compare it to the average of the other four municipalities is approximately $444 per year in savings. That's our medicine hat advantage.
Just to build on that point, so ours are the proposed 25 rates. There's our, you're working from 24 rates. And so I don't want to assume, but I will assume that theirs will go higher. So that gap in savings annually to the resident medicine that will increase substantially or increase more so than what we see here, correct?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, those rates aren't published yet. So we've used what is published. They, we've received indication from other utilities that their rates will increase. But yeah, at this point in time, we can come back and we will update the website as that information becomes available. I I want to take a minute to talk about two energy savings programs offered by the City of Medicine Hat. Our flagship Hat Smart program, as well as the Clean Energy Improvement Program. So the twenty twenty five Hat Smart program will continue to support the same incentive programs or incentives as the twenty twenty four program. So existing home incentives, new home incentives, enter guide home evaluations, as well as scratch and win. This program is funded through the environmental conservation charge on high use residential, electric, natural gas, and water customers in twenty twenty five. This program offers incentives for residential customers to make environmental and energy conscious home upgrades. This program makes saving money and energy easy for customers. In twenty twenty five, this program will be transferring to the Environmental and Land Department, who will develop and administer the program going forward. So stay tuned as this group takes the reins and exciting changes may be coming in the future. The Clean Energy Improvement Program was launched in Medicine Hat in June of twenty twenty four. This program is administered by the Alberta municipalities. And the program offers residential property owners in the city to finance up to a hundred percent of energy efficiency and renewable energy projects. It offers low interest rates and payments that are conveniently made through your property tax or your regular property tax bill. The City of Medicine Hat is offering seat financing rates at three point two five percent. There's links on the on our website, as well as on the slide that will direct and encourage customers that are interested in the program to check out more information on those websites.
Counselor Robbins has a question.
Yes, thank you. And through the chair, it said a question actually about the Hat Smart program, but I suppose it might apply to clean energy as well. So you mentioned the Hat Smart program, that it's being transferred to land. Will there is there in the budget there for because there's some cost to administer the program? So is that a reduction in these budgets that will see an increase in land's budget?
No, so part of the funds that we collect through the Hat Smart program fund the administration to support that program. And we've done a very good job of making it very administratively simple. So those costs are relatively low.
So but there'll be some, even if it's a minor change in the transfers?
Yeah, I I don't know the exact.
Sure, it would be very minor. I'm just saying, the fact that it's transferred is not going to make a big difference to their budget, doesn't make a big difference here. That's what I assumed, but I didn't want to assume.
Yes, it's fully funded program.
I've assumed correctly. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question on the Clean Energy Improvement Program. Off the top of your head, do we know how much interest has been? We've been getting through this program?
Great question. So we launched the program in June, and it is an annual program, so it'll go to next June. We're fully subscribed. So we've allocated budget or buckets of money to each calendar year or fiscal year. And there's been overwhelming response from the community to participate. I think Manager Mitchell has a response as well.
City Manager.
Thank you through the chair. Just a question, you say it's fully subscribed. Would you know how much oversubscribed it is? I know I'm asking you kind of to be specific, but it was probably full right right away. And was there, you know, a waiting list, another twenty percent? Just kind of to give myself and council a an understanding of the need.
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know specifics, but I can circle back with you and get that information. So I know with Hat Smart, we've done, we've we've put people on a queue, we put them on a waiting list and notify them as far as the funding status on the C program, because it is relatively new. It is being administered by a third party. I would have to double check. That's something that I will circle back and then provide council with that information.
And while you're doing that, if it's not a direction, but just a question, I'd be curious, those who, if it's oversubscribed, those who got in later, do they are they first in the next tranche? Or or are they is it start fresh and they have to get kind of like swimming lessons in the past? You got to get in line quicker next time.
Great, great question. I'm not as familiar with this program as I am with the Hat Smart program, but I will definitely get that information and circulate it.
Thank you.
If we could advance the slide, please. So risks and risk mitigation efforts. So obviously, we talked a lot about that through the austerity budget, some of the risks. We'll do a deeper dive in some of the financial and operating risks. But I want to provide a high level of of what the utilities consider when they're developing their budgets. And so it's not that, okay, well, we're holding the line and we're it's a calculated risk. It's it's identified that if we do this, what are the consequences? Or how do we mitigate those efforts or that type of thing? So if we could advance the slide, please. So as I mentioned, we've broken the risks into two components, so financial risk and operational risk. So extreme weather events, the city is experiencing and the world is experiencing increased frequency of extreme weather events with more extreme heat or high winds, events like those that we experienced in twenty twenty two, which caused widespread damage across the city. Energy transition, so changing consumers' expectations by changing the volumes, the type, the usage pattern of commodities, and the type of commodity that is being used over a period of time. Customer demand, it can be unpredictable and can have a material impact on the revenue requirements of the utility. As an example, the the water restrictions that were put in place last year as part of the drought management plan. Weather, the general climate, the number of hot days versus the number of very cold days are changing. These changes alter our system models and how we predict volumes through time. Cost of capital, which we alluded to earlier, the higher financing costs, the changes to allowable return on equity have a material impact on the revenue requirement for each of the utilities. Carbon credit extension program, as I mentioned earlier, we've applied to the government for to the for an extension and for our ability to se- secure the carbon credits for our composting program. This budget has assumed that that extension will be approved. And obviously, as we talked about the transformer example, the high inflationary environment, we're still seeing very high inflationary pressures in many of the specialized material used within the utilities. As Grayson mentioned, the electric industry is experiencing approximately twelve percent inflation year over year. On the operational risk side, so organizational evolution. So there'll be information coming forward as part of the Energy Business Review that may have a material impact on the operation of the gas and electric utilities moving forward, subject to council review and decision. Staffing and recruitment, retention and development. So utilities are experiencing a high level of competition for experienced staff on the national scale, likely reflective of the global energy transition. Regulatory evolution, so regulations are evolving very rapidly, particularly within the electricity sector, which requires diligent attention and resources to manage. Aging infrastructure, like most municipalities, aging infrastructure needs to be addressed to ensure that sustainable and reliable services are provided to our customers. Deferred capital, we talked about that a little bit as well earlier in the presentation. So some asset management projects are being deferred just based on available funding within the community or within the organization. So this does increase the risk of failure, but must be balanced with affordability and keeping the customer at top of mind. Talked about gas and electric meters, but they used to be delivered within four months. They're now taking as long as two years to be delivered. Next slide, please. So risk mitigation efforts. So how are we dealing with all of these challenges? So system resiliency and enhancements and future proofing. So engineering standards are being reviewed and altered to reflect a higher resilience to extreme weather than ever before. System models are updated, reflecting changes to concept of behaviors, including investigating opportunities to. Is based on data and risk based planning to optimize the level of capital reinvestment required. Creation of detailed, long range capital plans. So utilities aren't just looking at the two year budget that we're looking to approve. They're looking long term. What does a ten year forecast look like? Like, what does it look like in twenty twenty five years? Well into the future and finding ways to phase projects where possible to optimize the level of capital investment required now and for the future. Enhanced modeling. So utilities are employing very sophisticated modeling software and annually updating those software models to ensure system capacity meets the predicted customer needs. Where possible, new modeling technologies such as AI enabled predictive analytics are being studied for possible integration into existing models. Enhanced staff competency. So as the world is changing and as the utility industry changes, robust training and apprenticeship programs are being developed to ensure staff are up to date on all competency demands in a rapidly evolving utility environment. Succession planning and personnel personnel growth opportunities are incorporated into operational plans to remain competitive and relevant in today's highly competitive recruitment environment. In addition to this, we're actively involved in the industry. So the city actively participates on multiple boards, advisory groups, councils on provincial and then national scale. This ensures we're kept in the loop with current and the latest industry trend trends and regulations, which in turns allow active influence and industry wide response to those changing trends or regulations. For example, such as recent participation in the electricity market redesign and participation in the Safety Codes Council, which influences utility code changes. In conclusion, so the next step in the budget process, administration will work to update the applicable rate bylaws associated with the rate based utilities. Those bylaws and detailed budget packages will be brought forward to open council on November eighteenth for a formal presentation, as well as first reading of the associated bylaws. Those rate bylaws will be formally approved on December sixteenth with second and third reading with the effective date of January first, twenty twenty five. So thank you very much for your time. I know it's been a long presentation. I hope the presentation was informative and provide counsel in the community with some clarity around utility rates and the great work that this team does. I want to reiterate that administration makes every effort to provide affordable utilities to all rate customers while ensuring the financial sustainability of each utility. I believe this team has demonstrated that the twenty twenty five utility rates strike that balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. You're right. A lot of heavy lifting and teamwork here and very conscientious of the rate pair at the end of the the line, beginning of the line, quite frankly. Those dates that you had shown on the last slide, I seemed so far away, not so long ago, and here we are. City Manager Mitchell, do you have any closing comments before I seek to adjourn?
No, I just want to thank everybody, both council and staff, because we all sitting around the horseshoe and all of us really are trying to do the best for our community, and we have been top of mind with that. And I do, we've I've sent staff back many times, look again, look again, and they've done a really phenomenal job. So I just want to say thank you for all of that.
Counselor Hirsch.
Thanks. And and I guess I just wanted to maybe do a little bit of an illustration in terms of your guys' efforts to the broad community. And, you know, we talk about, and you read it all the time, saying, you'll never see businesses, if they have a chance to rebate or give you back or whatever else, if something changes, you'll never see that getting back or a reduction in terms of your of your fees. Well, the funny thing is, and and we point to it, and in addition to everything that's been done, here's an illustration where the residential recycling fee was removed effective April first, twenty twenty five, as I read it, which results in a just to the unfortunately, just to the residential monthly bill of a minus twenty one percent rebate, if you will, back to the consumer, the rate payer. So, you know, I think I'm just trying to do a vote of confidence and and to the rate payer saying, if there's any chance that we can do whatever we can, you know, to kind of reduce or, you know, it's not a fee that we've we've collected and finally we're able to maintain it and will always maintain it, we're actually saying, hey, listen, things have changed and we're able to rebate you the the amount back. So a small illustration, I mean, there's way more. We we heard a lot of anecdotal stories tonight about some of the efforts that's been done. And I just really, again, want to maybe reiterate the appreciation on the efforts of where we're at today. To really see a one percent net, one percent increase on the residential, I know there's different brackets, in this day and age, is is really, really appreciative. So thank you for that.
Okay, I don't see any other speakers. So any objections to adjourn? Seeing none. Six twenty six, we're adjourned.